All right, I'm giving you the heads up. You timestamping? Okay. Hello and welcome. This is the Town of South Kingstown's regular session of the Town Council. The date is Monday, June 25th, 2010. Can you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, can we have the roll call, please?
Council President Fogarty.
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
All members present.
And next, we have the approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion for the work sessions from January 5th and January 11th, 2010?
Move approval, then, of the work sessions, the minutes from January 5th and January 11th, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the regular session from January 11th, 2010.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session, January 10th, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda, if everybody would like to look that over and tell me if there's something they'd like to remove. Hearing none, nothing.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. License A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to use the Town Beach parking area and to conduct the Ocean Run 5K and Half Marathon on Sunday, September 26th, 2010, at 8:00 a.m. to Tri-Mom Productions LLC, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and the issuance of a certificate of assurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the risk manager. The application is by Catherine C. Robbins, managing member, 64 Copperton Drive, Wakefield. And this was continued from the January 11th, 2010, meeting. Is Catherine here? Oh, okay.
Hi, how are you?
Hello. So, would you like to tell us a little bit about your run?
Sure. We're planning on holding a half marathon and 5K the end of September in the Mattoonik area of South Kingstown. Quiet time of year, 200 to 300 people. You can run the races simultaneously. They run the same course, and then obviously, the half marathon goes farther, but the start of the 5K is the same for both races.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Catherine?
I think Jim got his.
Jim?
Oh, that's, you are Catherine Robbins?
I am Catherine Robbins, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Half marathon, 13, whatever it is.
Thirteen point one, yep.
Okay, let's see. What's, can you have, tell us about the route?
Sure, I have a map for everyone if you need it.
If you'll let Dale Burke get a copy of that for us.
We love to see maps.
The race starts and finishes at the Town Beach. It runs out through the lower section of Mattoonik, past the Ocean's Mist, Joyce Family Pub. That constitutes the first 5K portion. Comes back to the Town Beach, and those that do the 5K would turn into the Town Beach and be finished. Those who are doing the half marathon would keep going straight, a little bit past Washington Street. They make that little jug handle out there, and they head out Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road into Green Hill. They run the Green Hill section of the race, and they come back in down Moonstone Beach Road, finish up Cars Pond Road, back into the Town Beach. It's exactly thirteen point one miles.
All right, so you're gonna miss Sycamore Lane on that.
Yes, I'll miss Sycamore. No big hills for this. Trying to keep it flat.
You think it's doable, Jim?
Oh, sorry. No, I'm not gonna do it. It's just a golf cart. But maybe it'll be as a joyride.
Okay, Polly?
I wonder, are you raising money, or is this an athletic event, or?
Both. The net proceeds, I work with Andy Nada and Terry, and a large portion of the net proceeds go to the Friends of South Kingstown.
Great, I thought we should get that across. Good.
And how much is it to sign up for the race?
It's the 5K, it depends on the time of the year. It's a staggered, sign up the earlier, sign up the less expensive. It's $50 right now, $25 for the 5K. You get a tee shirt, finisher's medal. We have great support out on the course, good sponsors. Should be a good fun race, something different.
What does the tee shirt say?
Haven't gotten that far yet.
Oh, come on, come on.
Just very simple, Ocean's Run, it's the same shirt for the half marathon and the 5K, it's the half marathon shirt's long sleeve. Very basic, simple shirt.
So it's not like, you know, this car climb Mount Washington?
No fun slogans. I haven't gotten that witty with this race.
Any other questions? No? Do I have a motion?
I move approval of License A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Next, we have License B, a resolution granting a holiday license to Peking Tokyo Incorporated, 104th Road, Kingston. The application is by Zhang Dongzhu, 54 Forton Road, Apartment 1E, Kingston, Rhode Island. This is new.
Yeah.
Are you, did I, I hope I didn't say your name wrong.
I want to open for Asian grocery in URI, 104th Road.
104th Road, right, right. And are you, Mr. Zhu?
Yes.
Oh, you are, okay. And, so what was that beforehand? Was, is this a new?
Before, it's tennis store, tennis.
Oh, all right. I'm trying to think which one would be, Apartment 1E. So before this, it was some, it was something else?
Before?
Yeah.
Before, it's tennis.
Previous business.
The previous business, I guess.
Yeah.
Just, we're, just trying to figure out where you are in the plaza up there.
Who are you next to?
Leicester is, it's laundry man.
A laundry bag?
It's laundry man.
The laundry?
Yes.
You're next to the laundry.
Okay. Oh, okay, is that where it was? Okay.
I don't have that location exposed. Have you ever been to the laundry?
Okay, all right, gotcha. All right, are there any questions for Mr. Zhu?
I want to know what kind of food you will be serving.
We sell fruit and vegetable and Asian food.
Oh, will any of it be cooked, Mr. Zhu? Will it be cooked, or will it be vegetables and fruit as is?
Vegetable, fruit, and something Asian.
Okay. And do you want to give us the hours of operation, so you can let everybody know what time you're open?
I will open for 10 to 8.
10 to 8, okay. Pretty much every day. Are there any other questions? No, this is just for holiday sales. Okay? All right, go ahead.
How long have you been there?
How long?
How long is your business operated?
How long for business hours?
Yeah, how long have you been there? How long have you been open for business?
We want to open for next month.
Uh-huh, okay.
Any other restaurants that you own or proprietor or manage?
Yeah, it's my restaurant over there.
Whereabouts?
Uh...
What town, what city?
Eleven to ten.
Okay. Well, are there any other questions?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve new business, License B, excuse me, License B.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your business.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, we move on to public hearings. Public hearing A is a public hearing relative to the proposed 2010, 2011, to financial year 2015, 2016, capital improvement program as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too. And I will turn this over to Mr. Alfred. Move to the exhibit.
The capital improvement program ordinance requires the town manager to provide a six-year capital improvement program each year by December 1st. The ordinance also requires the council, after review and discussion, to adopt the capital improvement program on or before February 1st of each year. The council has reviewed the town manager's proposed CIP at three public hearings, one scheduled for January 5th, the second on the 12th, and the third on the 20th. During those sessions, the council has heard from staff and school committee relative to the proposed plans and projects which are resident to the planning document. The capital improvement program is a six-year financial planning document that annually evaluates brick and mortar needs of the community. The objectives of the capital improvement program are to establish what community need statement, to prioritize that need statement, and to determine how best that need statement can be addressed within the confines of the financial best interest of the community. The capital improvement program looks at the town's existing debt structure and forecasts what that debt structure will look at, look like, should the program be implemented as presented. The program also is broken down into two program elements. One provides for 14 projects that are included as major capital projects. Full funding of those 14 projects over the six-year schedule would cost approximately $19.5 million. Of that $19.5 million, within those 14 programs, approximately $10.1 million would be coming from new bond issues that would be issued to be able to complete those projects. The remaining $9 million would come from third-party revenues or pay-as-you-go contributions from the town's year-to-year capital budget. The second component of the capital improvement program is the capital budget and the pay-as-you-go presentation for the next six years. Within that category, that is presented on Exhibit 1 of the document that's attached to the agenda tonight. The projects, 15 projects listed within the general fund, one within the water, five within wastewater, and six within the school fund. Total funding that is presented on Exhibit 1 for the capital budget for the 2010, 2011 year is a total of $1,811,000. It's important to note that subsequent to the submission of the town manager's proposed capital budget, the governor's office submitted a supplemental budget which would reduce revenue coming to the Town of South Kingstown for motor vehicle reimbursement by approximately $1,808,900 in the current year and potentially $2.1 million in the 10, 11 year. In view of the anticipation that those revenues from the state will be lost, the manager's proposed budget for the general fund was reduced by $215,000. The $1,221,000 that is shown on the exhibit was listed at over $1.4 million in the original presentation. Those adjustments were necessary to be able to fit that capital budget within the drafting of the 2010, 2011 capital program. I also wanted to note that projects listed with the water and wastewater fund do not have any property tax impact associated with them. The projects here would be paid for through user fees generated from the system users for each of the respective systems, whether it be the wastewater system, or the South Shore Water System, or the Middle Bridge Water Systems. In addition to the capital budget and the 14 major projects that are presented within the capital program, the capital improvement program also establishes on an annual basis the fees that would be associated with fair share development. Fair share development fees in South Kingstown are associated with two different components. First is for school facilities. It is proposed that fair share fees, which can be only used for brick and mortar purposes, they cannot be used to pay down operational costs, would be set, as shown in Exhibit 1, for single and duplex units at $3,361, and multi-units of two bedrooms or more would be set at 50 percent that rate, or $1,681, and accessory apartments or one-bedroom multis would be at $840, or 25 percent of the single-family fee. Recreation fees, facility fees would stay the same as they have for the last three years at $3,763. The town zoning ordinance also requires, as a component of the capital improvement program, for the town to establish a calculation for in lieu fees for affordable housing. The determination was made that a house will be exempt from fair share fees if the value of the house's sale price is less than $171,000 on the example that's presented within the capital budget. Applicants can petition the town and document their cost to be able to prove affordability to be exempt from the fair share fees, both for schools and for recreational purposes. But the target number is assuming that fair market value for a single-family, assuming 80 percent of income for a family of four, would be that the most, or the 30 percent that they could expend on mortgage would be calculated out at $171,000 in principal payment. The last component that's presented within the capital improvement program is to establish the payment in lieu of affordable housing with the, within the zoning ordinance. This is for the purpose of incentive zoning that's provided. Under the town zoning ordinance, any subdivision of more than six units is, receives a 20 percent bonus. Those, that 20 percent bonus in density requires affordable housing units to be constructed. So if we had a 10-house subdivision, the 10-house subdivision would be required to build those 10 houses, but also to build an additional two units that would be affordable housing units. If the developer were able to prove to the planning board that they could not include the affordable units within the subdivision that was to be constructed, the second priority would be for the developer to have to acquire units within the town itself and have those declared as affordable units. If they could convince the planning board that, one, they could not fit the two units within the subdivision, and, two, they could not find appropriate units to purchase within the town to deem affordable, then the third category would be that the planning board would be able to accept a payment in lieu of constructing the units. And those dollars would be set aside in the affordable housing fund to be used to be able to develop affordable units in the future. The projected cost associated with what that payment in lieu of would be is that the developer would be required to pay $111,500 for, in the case that I presented, those two units, they would have to pay $123,000. That is a summary of what is within the capital improvement program. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council or the public may have on any of the specific items included within the document. I would note that at one of the budget sessions, a question from the public associated with the geographic information systems line item, which is a $10,000, which is a $10,000 item within the capital budget, the question was on whether the website that the town had developed and was, in fact, usable by web browsers other than the Internet Explorer. We advise that other browsers are capable of using the GIS system, but the GIS system and the platform that it resides on is set as a Internet Explorer, for Internet Explorer browsing software. What that means is that if one were to use an Apple computer with Safari, which is the browser resident to the Mac Apple systems, that there would be some pull-down menus that may not, may not work as they have been developed for the Internet Explorer. This is a common problem in terms of website development and the interface of different browsers. Most computers are set up for Internet Explorer browser use, so most websites have their software code written to be used with the Internet Explorer. When you use other browsers such as Safari or Firefox, which are two principal ones outside of the Explorer, there can be some interruption in the quality of the service that's provided. It would be very costly for the town to develop a GIS system that would be, provide the same user capability for all different browsers. I think as we move forward, there should be better compatibility between browsers, but the Internet Explorer really was the first, supports most computer activity, anyone's that are Windows-based, and if someone is having difficulty with a different browser, they do have the ability to come to the town hall, and we can be able to provide them with the information that they need. I think it's also important to point out that one of the questions was whether the consultant that is secured by the town, Camp Dresser McKee, who hosts the website for $5,000 a year, whether or not we could have better services provided. We've reviewed that. We don't think that there is a case where, we think that the hosting fees are very reasonable in relation to what market conditions are. We also think that CDM has done more than an adequate job in providing us with greater flexibility and integrating the GIS system with the various layers. The third question that was raised was whether or not the town's website provided enough insight from various web pages to let people know that the GIS mapping was available. We think, again, that the answer is that the GIS webpage is referenced on many of the web pages, whether it's with the recreation department, the planning department, or the manager's office. We will continue to try to provide direct links to GIS from each of the individual web pages. I think as people become more familiar with the town's website and use of GIS, we'll see increased activity. That site so far has had over 18,000 hits since it first started in July of 2007, so I think we're doing an awful lot of things right with GIS. But I did want to address each of those concerns that were brought forward to the council on the, at the meeting, I believe it was on the 12th. So with that, I'd answer any questions the council may have, or the public has on any of the items contained within this planning document.
Very thorough explanation, Steve. I appreciate you addressing that question that came up at the meeting. But again, there's 18,000 hits, so people are getting through without, you know, major problems, and we haven't heard of the other 18,000.
I do want to clarify that hits versus use are two different things.
Well, use, yes.
Hits simply mean that from a Google search, that the GIS comes up as a potential site for use. It doesn't necessarily mean that the site or that specific page was entered. But the fact that we've got enough information within our webpage to be able to have that coming up within the various search engines that are out there tells us that we are doing what we wanted to do in terms of getting that accessibility to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council regarding capital? Jim?
Steve, any money in the housing trust fund that has been triggered by any development or affordable housing site has, or developers taken optioned out, if you will?
There's been no payment in lieu of, as of this time.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, obviously, over the last two years, we've seen very little subdivision to begin with, and where there was subdivision, the, we anticipate that the units would be built within the subject subdivision.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the council? If not, anybody from the audience? Okay, hearing none. Then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What is the council's pleasure with the, excuse me, I've lost my page, with the public hearing, item A?
Motion to approve the capital improvement plan as shown on Exhibit 1.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to public hearing, item B, a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the South Kingstown Police Department Rules and Regulations Standing Order entitled Fitness for Duty Evaluation, Section 2, procedures are as follows. Fitness for duty evaluation, two procedures. B, relief from duty. When, in the opinion of the OIC Officer in Command, an officer's conduct could reasonably threaten the safety of that officer or either other department employees, the OIC or the other senior officers shall generate a memorandum to the police chief defining the OIC's concern. The police chief may relieve the officer of duty pending further evaluation. What struck from this is all pay and benefits will be continued if the officer is relieved from duty. That's, that has been struck. Added on is upon being relieved from duty, the officer will be placed on sick leave. When appropriate, the department may negotiate reasonable accommodations to reassign the employee to light duty for public safety or the efficient operation of the department. Any accessible or department-issued weapon or other department property may be seized. When appropriate, the employee may be ordered not to exercise the duties of a police officer. Nothing in this policy is intended to prevent or limit the officer in charge or department member from taking any emergency action reasonably necessary to protect the life or property consistent with the department's use of force policy adopted January 12, 2004. And I believe the chief is at the podium to discuss this. Chief?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. What's before the council tonight is a proposed amendment to the Police Department protocol that enables the department to address documented concerns when a police officer is displaying mental or emotional stress. The policy has been in existence since 2004 and has been implemented on three separate The existing policy provides that when an officer is relieved from duty to undergo the required examination process, all pay and benefits will be continued. On the three occasions when the fitness for duty evaluation process has been used, the officers were placed on administrative leave, and this type of leave is not charged to an employee's accrued leave. The examination process, that is paid entirely by the town, has proven not to be timely, and the officers have been carried on administrative leave for an extended period of time. That has been costly to the town. The town provides generous amounts of sick time, sick leave to our officers, and my position now is that it is not unreasonable to require an officer to use this accrued sick time during the examination process pursuant to this policy. I believe it represents appropriate fiscal management of the Police Department during this economic times, or the hard economic times that we're now facing. As the council is aware, the town charter provides that once the police chief promulgates rules or regulations, it has to be approved by the town council, and that's the purpose of my being here tonight. I'm asking you to support this amendment. So what's before you is my amendment to that section of the protocol that addresses relief from duty.
relief from duty. To now read, if you approve it, that upon being relieved from duty, the officer will be placed on sick leave, and it'll be taken from the officer's accrued sick time as opposed to administrative time. That's what I'm proposing.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Jim, is that, Jim?
Chief, it all makes sense to me. As an aside, any thoughts of what might the rank and file not like about this, or may, what are some of the questions that may come up in regards to this, your amendment here?
Well, I'm also required to notify the rank and file of the IBPO of any intention that I have to promulgate a new regulation or amend any regulation. I've done that, and I don't have any formal response, any formal response from the union. I'm sure that they would like to keep the status quo and not change it, but I've pursuant to another regulation, I've notified them, and I don't have a formal response. So, that would be my answer to your question, Jim.
That's fine. All right. Thank you.
Steve?
Could I just clarify, there's been no formal response, but there was an email delivered to the chief by the union president where he states, "Chief, as union president, I must respectfully submit my objection to this change in the FFDE policy wording. I believe that this change would not only create a conflict with fair labor practices, but degrades the actual spirit of the policy respectfully submitted through the union So, that memorandum was provided to the, to the chief at the time that it was posted at the Police Department. I would respectfully suggest that the policy change that's being proposed this evening does not interfere, violate, or restrict any rights or interests that a police officer has under Rhode Island state law. Rhode Island state law Title 45, Chapter 19, 1, provides police officers with full protection if they are injured in the employ of the town, and they would be entitled to, to all rights and benefits and salary during the time of that incapacity. This ordinance provision deals specifically with non-job-related behavior that would, in fact, infringe upon that officer's ability to be able to perform his or her duty. So, I disagree with the comment made by the union president, but I do want it placed on the record.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, we'll add that as a correspondence. Carol, did you have a question?
Yeah, chief, how often have you encountered a problem where you had to relieve an officer of duty pending further evaluation? Has this occurred?
Well, indicated it's only happened three times, and I consider that an unusual amount, really. But the process has worked very well, but as I indicated, it's not timely. We can't control the length of time that a psychologist or psychiatrist renders a report. Reports are usually in-depth reports, many pages, and it takes time for them to formulate the report, so.
Sure.
The process has worked, with the exception of this one glitch that I'm bringing to your attention tonight. It's costly.
Thanks. Any other questions for the chief? No, hearing none. Anybody from the audience? Does anybody have a question? No? Okay. Since there's no more questions, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, do I have a motion on public hearing?
I move approval of the Kingston Police Department Rules and Regulations Edition concerning relief from duty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to a public hearing relative to the proposed amendments to the South Kingston Police Department Rules and Regulations Standing Order governing use of deadly force, deadly and non-deadly, Section 5, Procedures as follows. Should I read all this? Mike?
Why don't you have the chief explain it?
Okay. Chief, there's a lot to read there.
Well, this is just a formal matter before you. As a synopsis of my memo that I provided to you earlier, in November of 2005, the Insolcal Trust, in conjunction with a work group of police chiefs, created a model use-of-force policy that has been adopted statewide by all trust member police departments. It's the standard operational procedure of all member police departments. Now, because police policies are working documents, there is often need for amendments. Those amendments are required by recent court decisions, recommendations from the Attorney General, or recommendations from the trust itself. Last November, the trust recognized and recommended clarification of the policy in the language of the use of force policy that address police reports when force is used. Previously, the policy required police reports only when force dangerous to human life was used. That's commonly referred to as deadly force. The suggested amendment would now specify that reports will be generated in all instances when less than lethal, lethal force is used by police when affecting an arrest. This amendment, in actuality, has already been incorporated within the South Kingston policy. And now, it's just before you for formal adoption as required by the Town Charter. As a practical matter, I have always required, and our Police Department has long known that whenever force is used, a report must be generated. So, this is just a formality before you tonight. I'm asking you to adopt what the trust has recommended. And I rest, I, I'm requesting that you approve this amendment.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the chief regarding the use of force? No?
Steve, are the other cities and towns under the trust, is, are we doing what they're doing, or are the other cities and towns also in full agreement with this?
Absolutely. The, the reason that the trust became involved with developing of model policies for use of force, in fact, I think there's five at this point that have been put out, is to ensure that, that member departments have the proper procedures in place so that if there is, in fact, an incident and claim is brought against the, the city or town, that there's clear procedures in place that were in place and that were followed, and the proper paperwork is in place. We think that, as a matter of risk management, that the, that this is what's best for all cities and towns, so that there's consistency across the board. And when we developed this, not only with the Police Chiefs Association involved with the trust, but also the Attorney General's Office, so that we feel that it's the most comprehensive policy for the protection of the cities and towns, and also provides clear delineation to the officer as to what their duties and responsibilities are in the use of force.
Thank you. Makes sense?
Chief, that's any force, right?
Not just firearm, any, any.
Any force whatsoever, whether it be the use of a baton, pepper spray.
Yep.
Or come-along holds to take somebody in custody. Anytime you have any force at all, there's a report generated by the police officer.
Thank you. Okay. All the questions for the council? Does anybody from the public have any questions for the chief? Seeing none, I will make them, well, I'll see if I have a motion, excuse me.
I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass, passes unanimously. And what's the council's decision on the public hearing?
I move approval of the proposed amendment to the South Kingston Police Department Rules regarding deadly and not, the use of force, deadly and non-deadly.
Second. It's been moved, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next, we move on to Communications. A resolution adopted December 14, 2009 by the Westerly Town Council requesting relief from unfunded state mandates is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. It's the council's pleasure on the Communication Item A. Jim?
I saw this kind of languishing. We didn't bring it up at the last meeting, simply because most cities and towns, and obviously with a budget crisis at hand, I think we need to get the General Assembly members on board here. Somehow or another, we need to get a list prioritization from all the superintendents, just what is absolutely essential to the educational needs versus those peripheral. I know a few towns have done this over the last couple of years, so I was just hoping that, I, I know our own school committee is talking about it, but maybe if they had a little push, it might be more serious with the General Assembly and include all the cities and towns, because everyone else has got the same issues.
Right. So, you're making the resolution, making the motion to support?
Yes. Yes.
And I certainly would, I would second that.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I was just unaware, Jim, that the South Kingston School Committee was supporting that. I know that.
I didn't say supporting that. They've just started their conversation about unfunded mandates, and that's why I just wanted to give them encouragement to pursue this matter.
Right.
As well as direct from the Town Council to our General Assembly members.
Okay. I, I just want to reiterate some comments when we had Dr. Hicks here in South Kingston as a superintendent, that if those mandates do go away, and they are unfunded, obviously a lot of them, we need to replace them with something, and what that something is, is for the school committee to put in place. So, I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I don't know, I don't know what.
To, to support.
Are you referring these to the school committee?
No, no, no. He, just in that we're in support with the town of Westerly and their request and their unfunded state mandates. We're just going along with them.
Yeah, I mean, I did want to, part of it was to encourage the school committee to take a look at this action, so that was part of my motion, if you will. Just to support Wesley, I don't think is giving a message to our school committee that we are concerned, but we are concerned on a statewide basis, again, with the 39, or 36 school districts. We all have this problem, and we all need to prioritize, and we need to know that the General Assembly cares and is going to take a look at this.
All right. So, pass it on to the school committee, I guess, that we're supporting Westerly. Okay. All right. Did we take a vote on? Yes, we did. It was, I didn't write it down. It was unanimous, that vote. Okay. Next is Communication C, a communication dated January 8, 2010, from Azide Sarah Perrin, President Compact Freedom Enterprises, requesting the adoption of the proclamation against domestic violence is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. What's the council's decision?
Stop beating your wife. How can we come out against it? Yeah, we're all in favor. We're certainly all against domestic violence.
Sure. All right. So, Polly, are you making a motion?
I, I move that we support this, too.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
I was just going to say, no. I think South Kingston has been ahead of the curve on this issue for a long time. We've been funding our own domestic violence center, and, yeah, and Polly's been on that board, I think, in the past for many years, and, yes, I'm very happy to have others join us, but we certainly have been in the lead on this issue over the decades.
And it's something that has concerned us for years.
Yep.
And still does.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded. Hearing no more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next, we move on to comments from interested citizens. So, any comments? Well, I guess maybe we should, do we want to talk about our new test? What's going on? We talked about it the last time at the last council meeting, but.
Maybe Steve, it's in Steve's report.
Is that in your, is that in your Town Manager's report?
It is now.
Good idea.
All right. Well, let's move on to the Town Manager's report.
What the council president was referring to is that this is the first meeting that will be web-streamed, and in fact, at this time, we have really done a test run. Test run is internal to the Town Hall at this point, but the entire Manager's reports from the last two weeks, as well as the agenda items and all backup material, has been placed on the, on the town's website for internal purposes, but to provide us with a demonstration as to what will be provided with the next council meeting. And essentially, what a person coming to the town's website would be able to click on to a box on the, on the, the front page, which would then take them to Clerk Base, which is the company that we've engaged to be able to provide for the web streaming and the archiving of information. What they would then see is a box that would allow them to look at all of the agenda items and see the council's agenda. The council's agenda items would be highlighted in a different color that would allow them to spring to the information item. So, any place where there's a different color, there's a, you can click on that, and it'll take you to the information item. In this case, where we have the Capital Improvement Program, if you clicked on the, on that item, it would bring up the 181-page Capital Improvement Program. If you clicked to the second public hearing this evening, you would see the chief's memorandum relative to the proposed amendment to the operating procedures and so forth. You'd also have all of the Manager's reports from the prior two weeks for the background information that had been provided. There was one information item where the National Rifle Association had taken considerable umbrage with the council considering putting any regulation on guns. There was 11 emails from individuals. All of those will be available within the website for review by the public. So, anything that the council is getting, other than confidential personnel information or litigation, will be available, just as it is to the press, it'll be available to, to the resident. Within 24 hours of each meeting completion, the web streaming will be available so that a person at their, at their convenience will be able to go to the website and to be able to review the council meeting. In addition to just reviewing the council meeting, if they're only interested in one item, they will be able to go to that item. It will bring the, the video to that point, and they'll also be able to look at the records and background information. That information will then be archived so that a year from now, if you wished to review what you did at the last capital budget adoption hearing, you'd be able to go back to all of the documentation that was there, and if you wished to review that video presentation from the prior year, you'd be able to review that as well. We'll continue to, to keep all of those there, so hopefully five years from now, we'll have five years' worth of, worth of history. There's also a search feature that will allow somebody to put in keywords to be able to come up with any of the items that had been on the docket that relates to that keyword. So, if somebody's searching for police cop purchases, they would be able to use some type of a search word, whether it was vehicle acquisitions, police vehicle acquisitions, and two years from now, be able to come up with each of the meetings when vehicle acquisitions were occurring. That's the objective. We'll start, we're starting out with the first meeting in February, that that will be available for the web stream, and all of the documents will be available, hopefully on the Friday preceding the, the actual council meeting, just as the council gets it on Thursday afternoon, all of the background information, it should be available probably Thursday night or Friday. It should be available probably Thursday night or Friday for public review. And anything that's on the website also can be printed. Where we go from here depends on really what the council wishes to do. We could provide computer access, screen access at the council table for the council to go with a papalist agenda. I think we're several steps away from that at this point. There's some security issues that we'll have to address before we can get to that point. But it is our objective to provide greater transparency in both the dissemination of public information and the availability of keeping that open for the public to be able to get at a later time if they want to compare notes. We think the public should be impressed with the system. And hopefully, we'll get some comments back if there's problems, if people have concerns. If they let us know, we'll try to work with those problems.
Well, thank you, Steve, for that great explanation.
The second item of my report is just to remind the council that the H1N1 flu clinic will be conducted at the Mattoonik School from 5:00 till 9:00 tomorrow evening. It is free and open to the public. The only thing that a person needs to do is to be able to fill out the form at the front desk when they walk into the school to be able to get the shot. There is no fee associated with it. There's no requirement that the person be from South Kingstown. There's no age restrictions as far as a person's coming to it, other than I believe it's age 18 or above. So we're hopeful that many of our residents will take use of the clinic tomorrow evening and get that shot. And certainly, we'd like to have the council there to get their shots as well.
I'll be there. I have mine all ready.
With that, if there's no other questions, I'll yield the floor to the solicitor.
Are there any questions, Steve? No. Mike?
Unless there are questions, I'm all set, too.
Okay, Mike. Next, we move on to appointments. Beforehand, we worked out some appointments. Polly, would you like to...
The first one is to the Conservation Commission. And we would like to appoint Jeannie Wetlawfer to a term for three years. And this would be to go till... Will she be filling in for Chris O'Brien? She will just go till September 2010.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Right dates?
In the building code, we have an appointment for the building code, Board of Appeals. This is also the minimum housing code, Board of Appeals. And this will be to reappoint Michael Joyce.
No, that would be an emergency appointment.
I'm sorry, to appoint Michael Joyce for a term of five years. So he will be... Do you have the dates on that, Dale? Will that be to...
Actually, he's gonna replace Ange Franco. Sorry, Polly.
Angelo Faraco.
He's replacing Angelo Faraco's term, which expired in June of 2010. So it will be till...
Will expire.
June 2010.
Okay, his term will be... He will be appointed to June 2010.
I think that's it for this evening.
Are you going to vote that?
Oh, yes. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Yes, a second would give. I'll second. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. New business items? Oh, that's it.
We adjourned.
Polly has moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 8:30. Let's call it 8:30. Thank you.